I'd like to call to order the June 5, 2012, Meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. Tonight, in honor of Memorial Day, we've invited the chaplain from the American Legion Post 23, retired U.S. Navy Officer Dave Boucher, who will come and not only lead our invocation, but then turn around and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Boucher.
Let us pray. In Isaiah 9:6, it says, "For unto us a child is born, unto us a son is given, and the government shall be upon his shoulders, and his name will be everlasting, and he will be called the Prince of Peace." Father God, bless your people here tonight. Guide them in their thoughts and decision-making. May it be wise and for the betterment of all your people. Bless all the men and women in our military right now who are in harm's way. Protect each and every one of them and bring them all home safely. Bless this great country and all its people. May we set an example for others to follow. God bless the POWs and MIA's. May we continue looking for them until each and every one of them is accounted for and home. Be with the mayor, commissioners, and all our city representatives as they undertake our city's business tonight. All God's children say amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Appreciate your coming. Ms. Eller, please call the roll.
Commissioner Nash?
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip?
Here.
Commissioner Dunning is absent. Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here. And Commissioner Dunning sends his regrets. He's under the weather tonight. Should be back with us next time. The first item on our agenda, I believe, is a public hearing.
Yes, Mayor. Brent's going to come forward and present to you some amendments to our 2010 Community Loan Block Grant Program. Brent?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Mr. DeFebbe, I'll keep my comments brief tonight. In 2010, the city allocated CDBG funds for a variety of projects. Of that remaining, we have about $24,200. That's really just a combination of underspending from all the projects. The majority of that funding, the majority of that underspending came from the Community Action Project where they purchased a parcel of land, and they purchased it for less than what the grant amount was for. So that's where the most of that comes from. The rest of it's just odds and ends from the other grant projects. We're here because we'd like to reallocate that money to public facilities to pay for the resurfacing of the multi-use courts at Parker Bennett Community Center. If you recall, last fall, I believe, I was here, and we had reallocated some Year Five funds to pay for improvements at Parker Bennett and Pettigo Park. After we got through the projects and started bidding, we realized that we weren't going to have enough money. So I was able to move this money around to finish out that project. Currently, there are three basketball courts and one tennis court. This would be not changing the footprint whatsoever. It would just be resurfacing and restriping it so it could be used for tennis, volleyball, basketball, pickleball, and soccer, also called Futsal, hard-surface soccer. So it's really just resurfacing the asphalt layer, restriping it, and making the improvements necessary to, for the variety of sports here. Also, I'll give you some updates on the other projects. This is the before pictures of the Parker Bennett Park itself. And if you'll, some of you might remember, this used to be the pool area, the old Parker Bennett Pool that has been closed over for some time. I never knew it as a pool. That's what others have told me about. And then there were some other spaces here for an old bathhouse and things like that. That has now been redone, and this is what it looks like now. Right here is the shelter. These pictures were taken last week, so I'm sure progress has been made since last week. Here's a picture of the shelter as it states right there. And then they've taken up all that old concrete and made a new walking loop and also some other areas. And I do want to give accreditation to this to our parks maintenance staff. All of this work right here was done in-house so we could take this money and push it a little further. Now, the multi-use courts will have to be bid out, but all of this was done with in-house labor. And our Pettigo Park, this was taken as before. We're upgrading the lighting so that they can expand it out to a sanctioned Little League field. And you can see the old wood poles here. Here are the new poles that were installed. And while I was out there taking pictures, they were removing the old wood poles. And those are going to be stored to use for some other projects down the road. So all these are up, and I believe this one is, if it's not done this week, it'll probably be first and next week before this project's completed. So we're right at the tail end of this. Timeline for this is we'll approve it next meeting. Then contract should be awarded sometime in August. Work should start thereafter following, and then be completed sometime this fall. It should be a pretty simple project, pretty straightforward. And then I'll take any comments tonight, if anyone in the crowd or any questions from the commission. And I'll also be taking comments until June 18, and then we'll approve it at the next commission meeting. If there's any questions, I'll entertain them at this time.
Any questions or discussions?
Just related to the Parker Bennett area. In my time on the commission, we've probably taken two to three summer strolls in that area. And one of the questions, in addition to improvements that we've already made in the past, is there's a small walking track that exists over there that's actually on city-school property. Many of the elderly people that live in the area walk that track and have asked for it to be paved. If we had any underspending on this particular project, would there be a possibility of using that underspending on trying to work out an arrangement with the city parks or with the city-school system to try to pave that walking track? Or are you pretty confident we're going to be?
I don't expect there to be any underspending on this. We had to cull back a few parts of the project to get it to fit for this, so I don't expect any now. But I'd be glad to work with the school systems on any type of improvements in that area.
Okay, great. Thank you. Nothing else.
Any comments or questions?
All right, thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present in the audience who would like to make a comment regarding this discussion? Seeing none, we'll then close the public hearing. And if there's any comments, please direct them to the address on the screen. Are there any awards or recognitions tonight? Mr. DeFebbe?
No, Mayor.
The only thing I'd like to mention is that, I just can't not mention this, is that the Gettysburg Academy of Math and Science has been ranked as the number-one public high school, not in just Kentucky, but in the nation. And that's all Kentucky students over there. It's just a great honor to be recognized in that way. Anyone else? All right, City Manager, comments?
Two, Mayor. The first will be a need for an executive session. Kate will read the reason.
Close session pursuant to KRS 6218-10B for deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property by the city, but only when publicity would likely affect the value of the specific piece of property to be acquired for public use or sold by the city; and KRS 6218-10C for discussions of proposed or pending litigation against her on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Nash. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
The second item, Mayor, with your courtesy, I'd like to add ordinance BG 211112-22 to our agenda tonight.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Anything else? No, that's all, Mayor. Thank you. All right, we're going to do the approval of minutes and go right to that one.
Okay.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
So moved.
May 15, 2012. Motion by Waltrip, second by Nash. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
So our first item will be what we've added to the agenda, which is ordinance 2012 number 20.
Ordinance adopting annual city budget, ordinance adopting the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2012 and ending June 30, 2013 by estimating revenues and appropriating funds for the operation of city government.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Nash. Any discussion? We had extensive and clear information provided at this afternoon's work session. And in order to avoid having a special call meeting later in the month, we added it to the agenda, so we'll go ahead and call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Next is second reading of BG 201215, the ordinance.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment, ordinance approving amendment number three to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, annual operating budget for fiscal year 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You skipped the public comments section.
I did. Thank you very much. As part of our meeting, we offer an opportunity for people to make public comments. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to comment on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, we would entertain that at this time. If there's anybody who would like to, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll continue. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. Next is municipal order 2012-88.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Bill Price to the City-County Board of Adjustments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Waltrip. The next are a series of board appointments that are coming due for July 1. I recommend them, and the commission approves or rejects those. And we want to thank those who have served and are rotating off, and congratulate those that are coming on board, and thank them for the hard work that they have done or are going to do. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2012-89.
Municipal order approving the reappointment of Sandra Butler McAllister and appointment of Louis Burke Jr. to the Historic Preservation Board.
So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Nash. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2012-17.
Ordinance approving appointment to City Board, ordinance approving the appointment of Steve Snodgrass to the Bowling Green Municipal Utilities Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Hill. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2012-90.
Municipal order approving the reappointment of Jack A. Thomas and the appointment of Delane Simpson to the City of Bowling Green Code Enforcement Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2012-91.
Municipal order approving the reappointment of Greg Oseaton to the Housing Authority of Bowling Green.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Nash. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Next is municipal order 2012-92.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of F. Albert Bailey to the position of firefighter/EMT in the Fire Department.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill and second by Nash. Mr. DeFebbe?
Yes, Mayor. After a 20-year career, Mr. Bailey retired last October, but he missed us so much that he has reapplied to come back and join us. And we thought it was a pretty good deal for the city because Mr. Bailey doesn't need to be trained, and we don't need to spend overtime during a training curve. I believe Albert is here tonight. Is that correct?
Mr. Bailey's here. We get to vote on him again.
Yes. So we're excited about it, and I think it's a good deal for the city. And obviously, Mr. Bailey wants to be here.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Welcome back, Mr. Bailey.
Municipal order 2012 number 93.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting the number 2012-28 for police department ammunition from Craig's Firearms Supply Incorporated of Knoxville, Tennessee, Kessler Police Supply Incorporated of Jeffersonville, Indiana, and Vance Outdoors Incorporated of Columbus, Ohio in the amount not to exceed $26,187.40.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Hill. Mr. DeFebbe?
Proficiency in firearms is an important element of all police work, and we do a lot of training. In order to do that training, we need to buy ammunition. We're not to bid for ammunition, which we do on a regular basis. We had seven bids. We decided this year to break the bids down into three parts, providing the lowest bid on a particular caliber that we need. We're buying three different calibers, .38, .40 cal, and .223 rifle rounds. This bid is good for one year. It's extendable for one more year beyond this approval period. Doug's here if you have any questions about shooting or ammunition or anything of that nature.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2012 number 94.
Municipal order approving the purchase of Mitsubishi HVC units totaling eight tons and authorizing non-competitive negotiations for installation from Brolin Mechanical for the Police Department Dispatch 911 Communication Center area.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Hill. Mr. DeFebbe?
As the commission may have heard, we've been having some difficulty keeping the temperature at a reasonable level at our police department, particularly in dispatch area. Jeff and the Building Department's been studying this. They feel the best solution is to buy eight tons' worth of what is known as Mitsubishi units that can be placed in the actual 9/11 center. There's a lot of individuals in that room, and there's a lot of equipment. Jeff Lashley is here if you have any questions about the purchase. And Doug is here to reassure you that we need this on an emergency basis. So this is why we're doing it tonight.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Ordinance 2012-18.
Ordinance renaming Street. Ordinance approving the renaming of a portion of 14th Avenue east to Alumni Avenue.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Waltrip and second by Nash. Mr. DeFebbe?
Yes, we received a request from the Western Kentucky University to rename 14th Street to what is known as Alumni Avenue. As we all know, under the TIF project, we're going to be doing some exciting things up around the university. They would like that activity acknowledged by the naming of this street to Alumni Avenue. This is processed through our Public Works Department and then our addressing in 911, and it's acceptable to us. And hopefully, it is to you all.
Any discussion? Yes, sir?
One clarification, just to piggyback on what Mr. DeFebbe said. It's only a portion of 14th Avenue. It's the portion of 14th Avenue that's abuts the university. I don't want people to think we're changing all of 14th Avenue on the other side of the university's name.
That's correct.
Thank you. Anything else? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2012-95.
Municipal order approving construction and accepting maintenance of Penn Drive in Nashville Road Center subdivision.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Waltrip and second by Nash. Mr. DeFebbe?
Pursuant to protocol when developer finishes the improvements in the subdivision, under our guidelines, he comes to us to accept the road and all the pertences. We're here tonight to accept Penn Drive and Nashville Road Center. Jeff and his staff have inspected the subdivision and feel it meets our code. Jeff is here if you have any questions about stormwater or road or traffic or anything of that nature.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2012-96.
Municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a revised memorandum of agreement with the Kentucky Division of Waste Management related to the Butler County landfill improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFebbe?
One of our goals, as the commission knows, is to try to use other people's money to get work done that we are responsible for. We're partnering with the Kentucky Division of Waste Management to manage the leachate problem that we have at the Butler County landfill. Been working with that division for some time. Went out to bid for services. We found out that it costs a little more than the $75,000. They agreed to up that to $105,000, but have now requested us, if we need more money, that we have to essentially revise our memorandum or of understanding. Matt Powell's been leading this effort, and Matt is here if you have any questions about why this is needed. It's essentially that DMV has changed its protocol and requiring us to ask a second time, if that makes sense.
I understand. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal order 2012-97.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of an application for federal victims of Crime Act grant funds through the Commonwealth of Kentucky Justice Cabinet for the partial funding of a victim advocate position for the police department in the amount of $38,426.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Waltrip and second by Nash. Mr. DeFebbe?
So often in the modern world, and much of the focus of crime is related to the crime itself, it's also important to realize there are people who suffer as a result of crime. For the last 20 years, we've participated in the victim advocacy program with the Kentucky Justice Cabinet for 20 straight years, applying for a grant and receiving it to fund a position to help victims of crime. With your courtesy, I've asked April Foulter, who manages the program, to come and to illuminate for the public the importance of this program and what it does for the victims of crime, if that's okay.
Sure. I was looking for April. I couldn't find you in the crowd. Come on up.
Thank you so much. Mr. DeFebbe, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I would like to thank you for your continued support of the Bowling Green Police Department's Victim Advocacy Unit and for this opportunity to share a little bit about our victim service program. We are currently applying to the Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet for our 20th year of funding through VOCA, the Victims of Crime Act. If approved, this will provide the Victim Advocacy Unit with continued funding for the provision of direct services to child abuse victims and their non-offending family members in Bowling Green for the coming year. This program provides support and advocacy services to children and families in crisis from the moment a crime is reported to police throughout the investigative and prosecutorial processes and beyond as needs arise. As you can imagine, when a crime occurs, especially to a child, As you can imagine, when a crime occurs, especially to a child, this is a very traumatic, scary, and confusing time for victims and their families. The criminal justice system can be overwhelming and often re-traumatizing to victims. The goal of this program is to provide immediate and ongoing services, not only to assist victims, but to prevent revictimization by the very system designed to help them. Services offered by our program include, but are certainly not limited to, crisis intervention and counseling, referrals for therapeutic, social, legal, economic, housing, and other community-based services, legal advocacy, including explanation of the criminal process, victims' rights information, accompaniment to law enforcement interviews, assistance with obtaining protective orders and emergency custody orders, meetings with prosecutors, court information, preparation and support, assistance with submitting written and oral victim impact statements in court, and obtaining restitution or crime victim compensation for victims. We also serve as medical advocates, including explanation of the medical process to victims, accompaniment to forensic exams, and assistance with obtaining follow-up medical services and records. We assist victims with registration with VINE, which is the victim information and notification system, a fabulous system through the Kentucky Corrections Office, which allows victims to be afforded the notice when offenders are released from custody, which can be very important for victim's safety and well-being. We assist victims with accessing the sex offender registry and sex offender registration lines, assistance during both the appellate and parole processes, and many other services. Each year, more than 100 child victims and their families receive free services from this police-based program. During the 2010-11 great year, support and advocacy services were provided to 118 unduplicated victims of child sexual abuse, 51 victims of child physical abuse, and 131 non-offending family members. Additionally, 10 victims of family and domestic violence, and 14 endangered children. Additionally, as this program is federally funded, any victim of a personal or property crime who requests assistance receives it. Therefore, the program not only benefits just child victims, but other crime victims in our community as well. In order to provide comprehensive services to victims, it's important to collaborate with other victim and social service agencies in our community. Services are coordinated with BRAS, the Barren River Area Safe Space, including a cooperative agreement which provides us two police-based victim advocates from BRAS at our station. The Child Advocacy Center, Community Action, Department for Community-Based Services, Hope Harbor, which is our rape crisis center, the Family Enrichment Center, school-based family resource centers, Life Skills, Kentucky Legal Aid, and many others. Additionally, I serve on many local agency teams, multi-agency teams, such as a Growing Up Safe Child Sexual Abuse Review Team, the Child Fatality Review Team, Sexual Assault Response Team, the Coalition to Prevent Child Abuse, and the Domestic Violence Councils and Elder Abuse Councils. These teams integrate a collaborative service approach to both case review and response in order to enhance victim services, increase offender accountability, network, cross-train, identify gaps in services, and coordinate resources while preventing duplication in services among the agencies. This is especially vital in our current economy when many agencies are responding to more families than ever in crisis, often with fewer resources. I simply could not do my job without the many local support agencies our community is blessed to have. I talk with other advocates across the state who can only wish for the network of agencies who work so collectively to help victims and families in crisis. I am grateful to the city of Bowling Green, Chief Hawkins, and former Chief Bill Waltrip for recognizing the need for and the benefit of victim services, not only for our youngest victims of crimes and their families, but all victims in our community. I appreciate your ongoing support in the application of VOCA funding and the provision of matching funds from the city in order to continue our important work to the citizens in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Mr. Nash?
If I may, April gets embarrassed sometimes when I do this, but I have had the pleasure of working with April long before I was ever a City Commissioner. And what she read is little more than words on a paper if you don't have the right person who's able to do the job. She described over 300 children in this very community that are the victims of abuse and neglect in just the last fiscal year, as she described. It's all about building relationships, and nobody builds relationships better than April does. And so you can thank the city all you like, but the city owes you the thanks.
Thank you so much.
And before we forget, I guess we need to vote on that. Please call or roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012-98.
Municipal order approving a statewide emergency management mutual aid and assistance agreement with the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
So moved. Motion by Hill, second by Nash, and Mr. DeFebbe.
During a time of emergency, it's important that all responding agencies work in a unified, coordinated way. The state takes the lead and asks us to participate in a mutual aid agreement. This agreement is circulated from the county to the locals, who are police and fire in our case. We've reviewed the mutual aid agreement. We find no problem with it. It's a standing agreement generally every year. Doug and Greg are here, however, if you have any particular questions about the agreement, as is Ronnie Pearson.
Any questions, discussion? Please call or roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance 2012-19.
Ordinance amending Code of Ordinances, ordinance amending Chapter 6 Building Regulations of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to revise the composition of the Building Code Board of Appeal.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Hill and second by Nash. I'll take this one if you want me to, Mr. DeFebbe.
Yes.
This is the continuation of the policy that the commission put in place and championed by Mr. Denning to both make the boards and commissions that we have more effective, yet making sure that we don't take someone's time needlessly. The Building Code Board of Appeal is required under state law, but has not met in the last five years. And we have, through Mr. Harmon over here, found a way to merge those duties with the Contractors Licensing Board. And so they're going to assume those responsibilities, and we thank the people who have been on the board, although unused for the last five years. That's the purpose of this particular ordinance. Is there any question or comments? Please call or roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2012-99.
Municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a special warrant deed from the City of Bowling Green to General Motors LLC and to execute other various closing documents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Mr. DeFebbe.
I would defer to Gene Harmon since there's some legal nuance here that'd be best explained by Gene.
That's fine. This one, I think we've been here once before, a few weeks ago, as everybody knows, for the last 30 years, the City of Bowling Green has owned the Corvette Assembly Plant due to an industrial revenue bond issue. Those bonds are getting ready to be paid off. If they've not been paid off already, I think it's going to be paid off in May. They initially came to us a few weeks ago, and we did them this board, doing a quitclaim deed. They came back and said because of some financing issues that they needed a special warranty deed. That's how they conveyed it to us, by special warranty deed. I didn't receive an issue doing that. That basically says we haven't done anything to obstruct their title since we owned it, and we haven't. Along with that, they've also sent us a couple of bills to sell because that industrial revenue bond also included postal property. In fact, some of it was paid off 10 years ago. We're not real sure why it wasn't released then, but we've had two different bond issues in postal property. In the last document, there was a lease agreement that was in place where they conveyed the property to us, we turned around and leased it to them. That lease will be re-leased from the records as well. Basically, I think mainly technicalities. This is a great project for Bowling Green, obviously. I think everybody was greatly relieved when GM made clear they were staying here a few months ago, and now this will get the property back into GM's hands legally.
And the General Motors Plant Manager, Dave Tepman, has invited us to an event on June 12th at the plant to receive the ceremonial dollar. I told him I was coming to collect, so it'll be on the 12th. Any discussion or questions? Please call or roll.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. And first reading of ordinance 2012-16.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 6.09 acres from AG Agriculture and HB Highway Business to PUD Planned Unit Development located at 1791 Old Louisville Road, presently owned by Farmers Investment Company LLC with Wabuck Development Company LLC as contract BND.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. This is our first reading of this ordinance. I know there are several people here tonight that are interested in the reading of this ordinance. I received some advice from the city attorney, which I'd like to provide to the commission here. We have three options. One is that we can simply vote on the planning commission's recommendations without any hearing or argument types at all. That's one extreme. The other extreme is we can have a de novo trial or hearing. We can start from scratch and make our own findings and conclusions. Since I've been here, and I don't think, Mr. Nash, since you've been here, we've done either of those two. We've always gone with the review of the record made by the planning commission and to decide to support or overturn, and we make our judgments on, let's see, I'll go ahead and read the rest of this. The planning commission has held a public hearing on this request and made findings to support its recommendations. If we agree with the recommendations, we need only to approve these rezoning ordinance. We cannot reject the recommendations of the planning commission unless we make an independent findings of facts and conclusions. And if we reject those recommendations, we must make our findings based on specific facts, not on general conclusions. And this type of hearing that we'll have tonight is based on the record, and we will not permit any new evidence to be introduced because the planning and zoning commission has already heard it. But we will allow comments, and I think both sides are represented by counsel this evening. I do have a couple of questions, if you don't mind me getting started. Mr. Hunter, Planning and Zoning Commission Executive Director. We have the record here, and we've all reviewed it, and then some of us have even listened to the entire hearing for a considerable amount of time that it was on. But the planning commission made their recommendation based on a certain number of land use requirements. Could you briefly state the number that they did, and did they meet those requirements, or did they not in certain areas?
Yeah, I'll just start first. A few years ago, the planning commission's staff used to make a formal recommendation to the planning commission the night of the hearing. And a few years back, we changed that where the staff no longer makes any kind of recommendation. We just simply walk through the policies, and we've always had a policy analysis for the last 20 years. And we just state the policies, state the facts of the case, and the planning commission makes a decision based on the compliance with the conference plan and the number of policies that are in the case. In this night, or this case, we had 22 policies related to this development project. And then what we do is we just sort of make a list, which ones the staff feels are in compliance and which ones we feel aren't in compliance. This one's a little more confusing because there was 22 policies, and if you looked in the staff report, it looked like there was 21 on the compliance list, but there were also five on the non-compliance list. That's because there's sometimes the staff feels it's a judgment call, and really the planning commission's staff will just explain to the planning commission that that one policy, you could probably look at two or three different ways. So in our opinion, there were 21 policies clearly in compliance that we recommended to the planning commission, five that were not in compliance, one of which was clearly not in compliance, and four that could be either a judgment call. And those four were LU4A, I think, four, eight, and nine, and TR2F. One dealt with compatibility, two with density, and one with sign controls on arterial streets. And the staff thought that, you know, you could make a judgment call on those four policies. So we put them in both motions, both sides of the compliance chart. The one policy that was not in compliance was LU1A2, which deals with the suggestion that applicants should consult with neighbors prior to submission, it says, of a general development plan or binding elements. And what we basically tell applicants is you should go talk to your neighbors before we have our hearing, and if there's specific binding elements you all can work out between each other, we'd like to get those done before the hearing so they don't happen on the floor. But I think even that night, we ended up even amending one binding element on the floor related to the frontage road on the Louisville roadside. So 21 in compliance, one not in compliance, four would be a judgment call.
And those four on both sides, it's 21 and four, the four included, and then 21, is that the way I'm understanding you're saying that?
No, 21 in compliance and four that would be, yeah, that's right. You're right. Yes. The four are in the 21, yes. Sorry, misunderstood that. And then one policy that would not be in compliance. And the planning commission made their findings on that and voted seven to four to recommend a recommendation approval to you with opposition.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone on the commission have a question for Mr. Hunter? All right. Thank you. At this point, I believe the, I'll allow the opposition to go first since the recommendation has been to pass. Mr. Davenport, will you be representing them?
I'm representing a number of landowners.
Would you please? Please come forward and identify yourself and who you're representing, so we'll have that for the record. Mr. Davenport, what we're doing tonight is indicated as we're working from the record, so if you would summarize your comments and then make your arguments from those, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, my name's Chris Davenport. I'm a local attorney. I practice with the firm of Roderick and Davenport. I'm here tonight on behalf of a number of clients that live in the Old Louisville Road area or have businesses in that area. They would include Barren River Area Safe Space, commonly referred to as BRAS, Mr. Eddie Hanks, Mr. Bobby Simpson, Ms. Holly Fields, who is the owner and operator of the Academy for Little People, which is located exactly across the street from the planned rezoning. I also represent Stargazer Satellite Systems, Greenstead's Home Furnishings, the Mayfair Motel and Apartments, and the Romans Repair Center. That's a large number of landowners and neighbors in that area I would submit to you. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, our objection to this rezoning is multifaceted, but the root of our objections principally lie in those areas of non-compliance. That is part of the staff report, which was made, an exhibit to the hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission. And in my view, I would submit to you that those areas of non-compliance and those policies that are not in compliance are substantial, both in number and in nature. In my practice before the commission, that's a large number to be out of compliance. And I'm particularly concerned, and my clients are particularly concerned, with that number of those areas of non-compliance deal with incompatibility. And in essence, incompatibility is the reason we have use restrictions and zoning ordinances in the first place. It's because from a planning standpoint, the City of Bowling Green has a lot of reasons to try to ensure that land use is compatible with its neighbors. And in this case, the incompatibility is not just mentioned in the staff report, but it's readily evident if you just look at the zoning map. This facility is planned to be a 100-bed inpatient facility. The proof at the hearing was that a majority of the occupants of this facility will be court-refered. They will be from outside this region, a majority of those, and they will be located in essentially a hub of both single-family residences and a number of businesses which purposes and use completely contradict the type of facility that's planned.
If I may, not to interrupt, Chris, but I do want to make sure that everybody also read the admonishment, I guess, that Hampton Moore gave the planning commission during the hearing on this. We referenced the applicable Kentucky statutes. If you've not read them, I'm sure you do when you read it, but I want to reemphasize that to each one of you tonight, too. As he said, and I agree with the advice he gave the night, the issue before you cannot be based upon the exact use, that this is going to be a facility like this. You have to make your decision based on whether this complies with the PUD requirements. And personally, and to keep this record clean, it would be nice if the conversation's limited to that overall use and not the particular use, because there is some discriminatory issues involved on the KRS if you make a decision based upon the particular use that the owners intend to put into this location. I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that.
Thank you for that, Mr. Harmon. If I may continue, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, we understand what Mr. Harmon, everybody understands what Mr. Harmon's indicating.
I understand his point, Mr. Mayor. I hope that the mayor and the commissioners have reviewed the hearing. There was considerable dialogue referencing KRS 100.982, the statute that defines disabled persons. You can clearly look at that statute and see that it accepts certain addiction issues or persons addicted to alcohol or substance abuse. That is not a principal point of mine tonight, but I do point out that in my view, if you look at that record, there was a lot of discussion was prevented that really shouldn't have been under that statute. All I've mentioned at this point is the testimony of the applicant about who a majority of these persons will be from what referral source. And their testimony at the hearing was, there'll be court referrals. Now, that is essentially people or persons who are directed to this facility in lieu of service at another detention facility. That's what that point is.
I understand.
And looking at the incompatibility, I think Mr. Hunter mentioned LU/4A4, LU/4A8, LU/4A9. He also mentioned that there was no disagreement with the staff of the Planning and Zoning Commission, that LU1A2 was out of compliance. And that is essentially a notice issue, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, I would be remiss, Mr. Mayor, if I did not place on the record my client's request for a de novo hearing. That would be their preference. I understand the commission's decided not to grant that type of hearing, and you stated the reasons for it, but that would be our request. One reason we'd make that request was, or is, that you've got a notice policy that's out of compliance.
Hold on just a moment. You've heard the attorney's request. Is there any, any motion if we want to start a de novo hearing? Do I hear a motion? We'll continue on, Mr. Davenport.
Very well. In essence, I believe you've got two categories of reasons here why this recommendation, and it is that, a recommendation of the zoning, Planning and Zoning Commission should be denied. One is on substantive grounds, and that's principally the incompatibility. And I think that is a cornerstone of land use regulation and land use planning. That is to find a facility or a use that is compatible with its neighbors, a zoning classification that is compatible with its neighbors. And I point out here that the land out there is essentially a blank canvas, and the applicant, according to its testimony, planned is to serve not only Bowling Green and Warren County, but the region as a whole. And I would submit there's a lot of vacant land in Bowling Green or Warren County or this south-central Kentucky region that would be much more compatible with the land use already existing around it. So the first ground we have, we believe, would be a substantive ground. Secondly, I think there's a due process issue. At the hearing, the lack of notice was commented by numerous neighbors. That was an issue brought before the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was a non, it was an issue of incompatibility in the staff report. I would also point out in the staff report that there are pictures of the subject property. I was somewhat amazed when I got that staff report after the fact, looked at the pictures of the property, and the sign from planning and zoning is not erected. It's actually laid down on the property. Now, that actually supported some of the testimony here on the record of the neighbors that said, "We weren't aware of this." And I don't believe they had an opportunity to really coalesce and present a concerted response before the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that's a due process issue. And I think that concern is supported by the lack of incompatibility or the non-compliance with LU1A2. A few other concerns were stated on the record, that are reasons I think the application is lacking. One is there was no traffic study performed. There was mention of that, I believe, at the hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a 100-bed facility is what's planned. That's a considerable traffic impact. The applicant also discussed pedestrian traffic, and part of their intended use will be extensive pedestrian traffic in an area that has no sidewalks. And I believe there was concern stated about that as well. I would submit to the commission that your options are maybe a bit more in number than what was stated before and in the email from Mr. Harmon. I would submit to you that with this number of policies out of compliance with the comprehensive plan and the nature of those policies that are out of compliance, and really to the extent they're out of compliance, that you really have no choice, and certainly in my client's opinion, than to deny the recommendation. But you can do so on a few grounds. And, Mr. Mayor, you're absolutely right. I agree with you that if you are to deny the recommendation of the zoning commission, you've got to state your grounds. I would submit to you that the staff report provide those to you, and the testimony before the hearing vetted those concerns. You've got numerous policies of the comprehensive plan out of compliance. Any one of those are sufficient and substantial grounds upon which to deny the application. I think those are twofold. Again, not to sound redundant, but you've got substantive grounds on the incompatibility. I think you've also got grounds upon the lack of notice. I would submit to you that the notice requirement is greatest when you've got a planned rezoning that's incompatible. That's when neighbors want to be heard. When an applicant is requesting a rezoning that's not incompatible with the existing land use around it, is the notice requirement so important? Is the neighborhood meeting so important? Is it so important to make sure the sign stays up on the property? I think it's most important in a case like this when the rezoning request is so incompatible with the neighborhood. So you've got the substantive grounds. I think you've also got the grounds about the notice. And if you adopt, as your findings, a recommendation of the staff that the notice was lacking and therefore the application was in- and therefore the application was incompatible with the comprehensive plan or out of compliance with the comprehensive plan, maybe what you're doing in that case is sending a notice to the applicant that they should consider reapplying and having a proper vetting of this application before the Planning and Zoning Commission. I know I represent numerous landowners that do not feel like they got a proper notice and had any meaningful opportunity to present their opposition before the Planning and Zoning Commission. So certainly, a request for that opportunity would be in line with their concerns on either ground, whether it's a substantive ground or it's the notice ground. I would sincerely request, on behalf of my clients, that the commission consider not approving the recommendation. There's past precedent for that. I've pointed out in a letter to your attorney this week that under the applicable statute, the final decision rests with this body, the elected body of this city. You have both options. You can deny, you can approve. The discretion is yours. My clients would ask you, you exercise that discretion cautiously. At a minimum, provide them a meaningful opportunity at an evidentiary hearing to present their concerns. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Davidport. Before we go to -- Mr. Hunter, did you have something you need to bring to my attention?
Please, sir. I appreciate that. I don't want to get into a war of words with Mr. Davidport. Well spoken, but a little bit clarity on some of those facts. The sign that was laid down in the picture, you see a picture of five pictures in your staff report. That's the exact day when the staff goes out there, 16 days prior, and puts a sign in the ground. The gentleman took a picture of the sign -- he took a picture in every direction. The sign was laying on the ground because he hadn't put it in the ground at that moment. There's a picture with the sign up. He took the same five pictures in the same five seconds, two minutes, whatever he took him in. That sign was not on the ground ever, except when he laid there on the ground and he snapped his pictures first, and then he took the one specific picture that's the very dead center of that page, and the sign's up. So the sign's never on the ground. We drive by and check those on a weekly basis. So the sign was up. There was no issue there. The notice issue is somewhat confusing, and I want to make sure you all understand. There's two kinds of notice. The statute's very clear that we have to send letters to adjacent property owners. We have to put a sign in the yard, and we have to put an ad in the newspaper. The Planning Commission staff did all of those things properly according to the state law. There was no issue with the legal notice that the Planning Commission sends. The notice he's talking about is that policy directive that says applicants should consult their neighbors prior to submission of a general development plan at a public hearing. That's a notice that's put on the applicant that we say, "Look, you should go talk to your neighbors." We don't tell them how to do it. We don't tell them they have to send a letter. They could knock on a door. They could make a phone call. They could have a neighborhood meeting. They could put a flyer on everyone's door. It's supposed to be some kind of community discussion. That's the notice he's talking about. But the actual notice that the statute requires, 16 days prior to the public hearing, we mail out to every adjacent property owner. That was done exactly to the letter of the law, based on the adjacent property owners' list provided by the applicant. That notice was correct, so clearly all the adjacent property owners got their official notice from us, and they were at the hearing, so clearly they got notice. The neighborhood notice for that other meeting is totally up to the applicant, and we never know how they give the notice. And you can see in the staff report, we just put no information was provided to the staff. So we don't know exactly what they did. If they went and talked to each neighbor one-on-one, the applicant would have to say that. Did they have a meeting? Did they give a flyer? Did they make a phone call? And again, the purpose of the policy directive is so that you go talk with your neighbors before the hearing and work out indifferences, basically, and come up with binding elements that hopefully reach compromises before the Planning Commission. That's a policy directive, but it uses some words in there that sort of are very kind of vague. It says, "You should go consult with neighbors," and it doesn't define how you do that. That's not a legal notice requirement that the applicant's bound to do. It's a policy directive. And Mr. Davidport is right. We felt the applicant did not meet that policy because they didn't give us any information on what they did. They just said they talked with a few neighbors. So I want to make sure you know the difference between the two notice requirements that he mentioned, and that's where we stand on that.
Let me make sure I understand. Planning and zoning is responsible to put up the sign. They did. Planning and zoning is responsible for sending out the letters, and they did. Planning and zoning is responsible for putting an ad in the paper, and they did.
Sure.
And I was trying to find the language on that.
LU1A2?
LU1A2.
Yeah, should be one of the first policies on stop --
And preparing a general development plan surrounding property owners must be consulted prior to submitting a zone change request to the Planning Commission.
Key word, doesn't define what surrounding is. It doesn't define what consultant means.
So my next question, does it mean adjacent property owners or?
It doesn't say. The policy is vague, somewhat on purpose. I think, again, it just puts the burden on the applicant to figure that out and do something as opposed to nothing. And the Planning Commission weighs that policy very heavily, that if nothing is done, they are concerned about that. But clearly, again, folks are in the room. The applicant, I think, can get up here and tell you what they said tonight, that they thought they attempted to talk to some of the property owners one-on-one. Did they have a formal meeting? No, I don't think they did. Did they mail notices to everyone? I don't think they did. But I do know they talked to individual property owners, and clearly people had notice or we wouldn't have the room packed that night, so. But it's a serious policy enough, again, for us to put it in the noncompliance list. Just wanted to clarify that.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hunter?
Only in, maybe not specifically this one, but should that vagueness be corrected somehow? So that we don't have this issue again?
Well, we have two policies in there. One of them's LU4A9. It deals with residential density, and it uses the word "should" and "surrounding" again. I've always said it's kind of beauty in those policies. They are vague because they make the applicant attempt to interpret that and do something to meet those policy directives. And they are just policies. They don't say "shoulds" or "shall's" every time. And then I think we have corrected because we have a new comprehensive plan going into effect in September 1, and those policies will be put out the pasture. So we fixed it.
Okay. I failed to see if anybody had any questions for Mr. Davidport before he was seated. Is there any questions? All right, sir. I think you're up. Please identify yourself and your address and who you're representing, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner, members. I'm David Vickery, and I represent the applicant. I'm an attorney of Litchfield, Kentucky, and I represent the Men's Addiction Recovery Center, the one we hope to build on the piece of property that you're dealing with here tonight. And Farmer's Investment Company is the owner of this property at the present time. Walbug Development Company is the one who has the option on it, and they will be, of course, just transferring it over to Men's Addiction Recovery Center, which is known with the acronym MARC. And if we might use that, that'll save us a little bit of time. I want to talk about what's been said here tonight and what's been said, and I'm going to just talk about the minutes. I'm going to talk about what Mr. Davidport said because we did comply with the rules and regulations, and I want to go through this if I could briefly. I think there's a couple of things to really remember. The front part of this property is zoned highway business, HB. The back part of the property is zoned agricultural. Now, Mr. Brett, if, and I know all of you have read the minutes and gone through this. You may have even looked at the tape. But Mr. Brett of the Planning Commission staff explained to the Planning Commission that the use group living is allowed in the HB portion of the property, and in fact, the applicants could have used this portion of the property for the Men's Addiction Recovery Center with no zone change whatsoever. But the rear of the property is zoned agricultural. The Planning Commission pointed out some real important definitions. One important definition that they pointed out was the definition of group living, and they gave the differences between group living, they gave the difference between residential programs, and they gave the difference between the idea of just residential occupancy so that everyone would understand. Group living, the residential occupancy of a structure by a group of people who do not meet the definition of household or family, but which share a common eating area such as a rooming house or boarding house. As I said, we could have built this without any zoning whatsoever. So we talk about compatibility. Part of this was already compatible with the zoning regulations. The example of group living, and it was pointed out by the staff, included residential programs for drug and alcohol treatment. The new owners, and that's the MARC, wanted the option of converting this to multifamily housing in case the state of Kentucky, due to budget constraints sometime in the future, which we don't think will occur, but we all know what budgets are like. In case the budget may be such that the recovery program dries up and there's no more money, then we wanted to be able to convert this piece of property to multifamily housing in case that ever happened. In addition, the staff of Planning and Zoning wanted to consolidate these two lots into one. They don't like split zoning, they informed us, and I understand that. They don't like an agricultural next to a highway business, and I think everyone would agree that that certainly in the back there is not an agricultural piece of property where it's located, and they wanted to get rid of that. So everyone thought that the best thing to do was to convert it to a planned unit development under Section 48, where the uses would be limited to a group living facility which would house a men's recovery living facility and a multifamily housing in accordance with the statement of binding elements worked out with the staff and the Planning Commission. Now, we've talked about these various policies, and Mr. Hunter has just got up here and he's talked about them, too. It's difficult, and as he's explained to you, it's difficult to comply with all the policies because there are policies and some of them are vague. But I think it's pretty good that we had all these policies and we complied with all of them, except there were four on both sides, and one, he had to put his noncompliance because he didn't have any information on it. And the only real issues to the planning staff was signing limitations, which we addressed, adequate landscaping, which we addressed, extension of the frontage road along Louisville Road, which we addressed, and we addressed every one of these in the binding elements. Now, we talked a lot about the surrounding property owners being consulted, and Mr. Hunter explained to you that the word consulting is very vague. We tried to contact all the property owners adjoining and near the property and tried to explain to them the proposed use of this facility. When, if you look at the minutes, you will see that a lot of people who testified admitted that, yes, we had contacted them, and we had talked to them about it, and we had explained the program to them. Not a single person who got up there that I remember, and I read, and I've looked at these minutes again, not a single one of them said that they were not contacted. Now, as Mr. Hunter explained to you, this doesn't mean a neighborhood meeting. It doesn't mean letters, just as long as we contact, and what we thought was the adjacent property owners. Of course, we did more than contact the adjacent property owners. We contacted the surrounding property owners. The main objection that we had, as you heard from the hearing, came from the Barren River Area Safe Space. This is a domestic violence shelter, and we submit to you that their objections and Mr. Davidport's objections just don't conform to the guidelines set forth in the zoning ordinance. But instead, they really object to the treatment of these persons who have addiction. We tried to explain that these persons were not violent offenders. No man would be accepted into the program with a history of abuse. No sexual abuse people would ever be allowed into the program, but all of no avail.
Mr. Vickery?
Yes.
If you allow me, I'll provide that same limitation on you talking about who's going to be there, as I will on the other side. Now, again, it does not apply, as Mr. Davidport pointed out, to those who are assigned there from the Department of Corrections.
I want, that's the reason I wanted to mention that one thing, if I could, Mayor, that one correction. If you will look at the minutes, you will state, you will see that the statistics actually are not more than, around 40% actually go from the Department of Corrections. 60% in fact are off-the-street private individuals who come and go to the facility.
Thank you, sir.
So, and it's important to realize that, you know, that the brass area where they are is also zoned highway business, and they enjoy the same ability to operate their program as we're trying to operate, and they either do it as, under the group living allowance or under the residential care facility allowance allowed by the statutes, KRS 10892. And that's what Mr. Moore explained. And if they're allowed to do this, and we're allowed to do this already, we don't see where this is an incompatible use in any manner, shape, or form, in any shape or form. And we talked, he talked about the makeup of the neighborhood, and this neighborhood, as the staff report pointed out, is mixed at best. We've got a daycare center, which objected, and they were two, they were across the road. It's 800 feet to the brass center. We've got an older trailer court, which is across the road, 150 feet. We've got a monthly rate motel, as the staff pointed out, and that's 500 feet. We've got some older apartments right there. We've got a motorcycle shop, which is next door. We've got three taverns and a bar. We've got a gentleman's club. We've got a pool hall. We've got 10 automotive repair shops. We've got four liquor stores, and we've got the Humane Society. I mean, we've got a real mixed bag here. In addition, on down the street, we've actually got some single residents, some single-family homes. So this is a real mixed bag of uses right in this area, and this is something that we do have. Now, the planning staff pointed out that the applicants were going to limit this use to a recovery center or a multifamily housing area, and I didn't hear really any real objection to multifamily. We have multifamily actually being used across the road there. And as I said, we're, we could already, under the present ordinance, operate the facility on a smaller space right now under the present zoning ordinance. And we've already set forth to meet the landscaping requirements of the zoning ordinance. We addressed the traffic policies. The access to the development is only going to be through Louisville Road. In addition to that, there's going to be a traffic impact study if it ever changes to multifamily, and we have to come back again. And then we have to demonstrate the need for a frontage road. We have to build the frontage road if the traffic impact study indicates that it's needed, and we actually had to plot where that frontage road is going to be. These things were all done and addressed. We talked about this program, and we went over it, and we think we've really complied with these policies. We've complied with everything, and we just think, what better place than Bowling Green to build this wonderful recovery center? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Did anybody have any questions for him? No questions at all? Yes, sir, please.
I do have a question for Mr. Davidport.
Mr. Davidport?
Yes?
Mr. Davidport, you indicated, and I'm going to say back what I heard. You correct me if I'm wrong, that the adjacent property owners were not contacted.
I don't think I ever said the word "adjacent," Commissioner Nash. What I said was, and by the way, I really tried to refrain my comments to the record.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'm not sure that's happened with everyone that's spoken so far, but I've tried my best to do that. What I said what, Commissioner Nash, was I did not believe that the neighborhood and the surrounding landowners received proper notice. And I know Mr. Hunter and certainly Mr. Vickery want to point out that you have two levels of requirements here. One is statutory. And of course, Mr. Hunter's absolutely correct. The statutory requirement is adjacent landowners. The policy requirement is surrounding landowners or the neighborhood area, I would submit to you. And to downplay what the policy says, I think is incorrect. And the reason I think that's incorrect is the standard of review of both the Planning Commission and this body is not where the application satisfies statutes. It's deeper than that. Does the application satisfy the policies of the comprehensive plan? And that comprehensive plan was adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was adopted by this body. It was adopted by the fiscal court. And to require, you know, the policy requires notice and consultation. Now, I can't present to this body all the people that have called me and said that didn't happen. You have limited your review to that hearing, and I understand that. So to speak more on that, I think I'd be remiss, and you'd probably remind me of what you're reviewing at this point. But suffice to say that even on the record that was established, a lot of those people in that neighborhood said, you know, I didn't get, certainly didn't get very good. in that neighborhood said, you know, "I didn't get," certainly didn't get very good notice. I think there was talk and testimony of a day or two before the commission meeting. I don't think that satisfies the spirit of the policies, and I don't think it satisfies the letter of that one policy Mr. Hunter spoke about. And I, you know, that was not one of those policies that the staff felt like was either way. That was the policy that the staff said was not complied with. And I'll reiterate that I think that policy is extremely important when you talk about incompatible use. I hope that answers your question, Commissioner Nash. I'm not, I'm not sure it does, but I'll take another whack at it if you like, I guess.
Well, let me ask another question. If I understood correctly, when you made your opening remarks, you're here representing approximately eight different people or entities.
And that's correct. And I was remiss to point out, some of these persons, I believe, are in opposition. I do not represent. And I want you to know that. There may be other persons in opposition that wish to speak as well. But of the eight, if you look at that zoning map, the eight I represent are some of the most adjacent, most contiguous, very close to the planned development. And some of them are here tonight.
Did they receive notice?
I don't, I can't, I'm sure if I can speak for all of them. I know that some of them did. I can say that.
Okay.
I, I'm not, and of course, I'm not entirely sure how many testified at the hearing. I don't recall at this point. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Anyone else? Thank you. Mr. Harmon, you have made a recommendation that, since we limited to the record, that only those people who had spoken previously would be able to summarize their comments.
Well, that's my recommendation. If you decide to conduct just a hearing tonight based upon the record, that I think only those people that address this board should have been the same people who spoke at the Planning Commission, and their comments tonight should, again, be reflective of what they testified to before the Planning Commission, again, summarizing what they said. They can make arguments as well. But I think if you're going to limit this to a record review, then only those people or their attorneys who speak for them should be addressing this tonight, because once you open it up to new people who did not address the Planning Commission, now you're hearing new evidence that the Planning Commission did not hear.
All right, so if there's... Go ahead.
I just had one more question.
Sure.
I'm sorry. And this goes for Mr. Vickery. Sorry to have you come back and forth, but I wanted to go in the order. I'm going to repeat back what I heard. You correct me if I'm wrong, and that is that you tried to contact adjacent or surrounding property owners.
Yes, we did.
Can you tell me how you did that, please?
We actually, two ways. We actually visited some of them. Now, I'm not talking about me personally. I'm talking about all our people. I know we made phone calls to numerous people, for example, with regard to the brass people. A long conversation was had with them. That's just an example, trying to explain the program because we knew that they were the ones that had the majority of the objection, and we tried to do that. Mr. Seitz, who is actually in charge of this program, actually made a real effort to do that and talk to these people. And as Mr. Brett explained, when he, actually reading from the actual minutes himself, no information of a neighborhood meeting was forwarded to the Planning Commission. That's the reason they put that in there, about noncompliance, however he puts in there. However, it was noted this afternoon that the applicants did contact their neighbors one-on-one about the project with the neighbors. That's actually from the minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else? Anything else? Offer the floor to those who have spoken in the previous hearing. If you'd like to come forward and summarize your comments, again, with the restrictions that the law has provided for us, please come forward and Ms. Alcott, and give us your name and who you're with, please.
Lee Alcott, the executive director of the Barren River Area Safe Space.
Thank you, ma'am. Go right ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I do want to clarify, the attorney who just spoke said that they had a lengthy meeting with us. I read about the proposed zoning change in, I think it was the April 7, Saturday evening newspaper. It's a little blurb at the end of an article about the Small House Road controversy. I had no clue about it until that news article. I immediately contacted our Board of Directors via email to say, "Okay, what are we going to do?" They said oppose it. We need to find out what we can do. I called Kentucky Housing Corporation that Monday to say, because they are also our funder, they fund our housing program. Why didn't you tell us? What, you know, they said they didn't know. It's my understanding there was someone in that, the original group who visited that property who knew where the shelter was located and didn't say anything. I got a call from Deborah Williams at Hands after I talked at Kentucky Housing. I called Gary Watkins to say, "Gary, why didn't anyone let the shelter know this was happening?" And then I got some other phone calls. So I started calling neighbors. When I called Holly Fields, the owner of the Academy for Little People, I think it was that Tuesday, after the newspaper article ran, she had not heard about it. And she was contacted. She told me like three days before the hearing. So our, a big concern is the lack of due process. We did not have time to prepare, to get legal counsel, to come together as a neighborhood group to present legally to the planning and zoning. I mean, we did the best we could with the little time we had to gather our facts. Now, Mr. Dale Seitz, who is the CEO of the center in Henderson, and will be the CEO of the proposed center in Bowling Green, did call me, I think it was a week later. He had called some people in Bowling Green to find out who I was, what I did. I had a couple of phone calls from people that we do business with in Bowling Green to say, "You need to talk to him." So I did speak with him. He came, met with me on a Friday afternoon to present their case, and, you know, I understood what he was saying. I don't think he understood what our real concerns are in running a domestic violence shelter. Of course, the issue is more than just us. There are a lot of neighbors with the same concern. So there, in my opinion, was not a really good attempt to notify the neighborhood. It would have been nice in January if the applicant had asked for a neighborhood meeting and had posted notice and up and down, Old Louisville Road, isn't that long? And said, "This is what's happening. Let's have a meeting." But to read about it on a Saturday evening in the paper, and, you know, our whole world has been turned upside down because of this. It's been open season on the shelter since April 7th. And, well, since April 19th, and we had to publicly disclose the location of the shelter.
Yes. What do you mean, "open season"?
We have had nine security breaches, which is a lot, since April 19th. That means people coming onto our property where we have had to call the police. We had an individual post our address on Topics in four counties, had to deal with that, getting that taken off, filed a police report. Hopefully, they'll find out who did that. Once that happened, we contracted with the city police to post an extra, they usually do extra patrols for us just as driving around if we have a concern, but we actually had a police officer in our driveway for three evenings after the Topics issue, which told people exactly how to get to the shelter, how many security cameras we had. I mean, it was distressing.
Who just... I'm sorry, go ahead. I don't want to...
No, there was reference in the Topics conversation about the Recovery Center and planning and zoning and us having to disclose our address. So there was a connection to that. So it just has felt like open season to us.
Who disclosed your address?
Well, we have not heard back from the detective who is trying to find that out. They were going to subpoena an IP address to track down that person. But we did file a police report.
So prior to that Topics post, your address had never been disclosed?
Not, well, it was disclosed at planning and zoning.
Okay. Who disclosed it then?
I did.
Okay.
Under oath.
Okay.
I mean, I didn't have a choice.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there anyone else who has spoken previously that would like to summarize their remarks? Mr. Wills?
I've got some. How many to say?
Were you at the previous hearing and spoke? I don't remember your...
We had the previous hearing and spoke. We didn't know that.
We didn't know that.
Okay. I'm sorry, we'll have to limit the comments to the record, or that becomes then a new hearing where we start completely from scratch. So I'll have to... Pardon me. I'll have to excuse you. I'm sorry, we won't be able to listen to new evidence. Is there anyone else that spoke that would like to summarize their remarks?
Mayor.
Mr. Simpson?
We have a lot of people here that were spending at meetings at the number. That's exactly right.
I appreciate that information, but we're limited in this case to the record that we have, and we'll allow those who had spoken previously to summarize if there's any desire to do so. All right, signal one. Our next step is to decide from this point what to do. We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the zoning. If we, when I call for the vote, voting yes will be our first reading of an ordinance. There's a second reading also. If we vote to approve it, then we'll move to the second reading. If we vote to disapprove it, then we will have to have another motion stating our objections to it and why we did not approve it, listing those specific reasons.
And you should come up with findings of fact and your own conclusions about why the Planning Commission should be, their recommendations should be overturned.
Are there any questions as to the process? So yes vote is to approve, a no vote is to not approve, and then we'd have to move on to the motion to deny. Please call her on.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Okay. I think that's the last item that we have on the agenda, and we have a closed session.
Yeah, we have two items.
So we'll take a few minutes recess, allow the room to clear, and then we will convene in closed session.